Oh, yeah.
That's a success.
Do we have a date for it?
Oh, yeah.
May seventh, June.
It's coming up?
Thank you.
We're just gonna be out.
I'm gonna stop this anyway.
Morgan.
Oh, my, my friend.
And I'll go with the house because Caitlin.
You've got.
Caitlin is on one.
I've been crazy.
So I'm not real sure.
What?
To the top of her.
Jeff.
Well, it's in the wedding ring.
He's got Ian and Jeff are best like.
Did he think, um?
Ian, Ian was rude?
Huh?
Did he take good food?
I mean.
Or has he had you just?
I don't know.
Sit down.
I could do whatever.
Or do you like to sit in front of me?
Would that over one or two?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Oh.
I'm just.
No, I don't mind.
Oh, wait, please.
This is good.
I don't have a song.
He's not having to go to the office.
I mean, somebody decided one of like stuff.
Oh, no, no, please stop.
I know you've tried before.
I know.
There are a lot of.
Analysis.
Ranchers.
Ranchers.
Uh, I saw.
What it must not be.
Well.
The house next to me.
It's like.
Really.
Yes.
Yeah.
They also.
It's ranching.
I've got two over.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, so you're the.
You're getting to that first.
I'll have them Wednesday.
All right.
That's all.
I want to.
I have the box. I have business. Well, I'm here because I don't want them melting outside.
Yeah.
I heard they're good in the freezer.
Yeah, somebody else said.
I can never try that.
They never make it.
I got you a little. Oh, man, you'll let you there. That's everybody else.
I mean, I.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Do we get? Good start. Seems ready. Good evening and welcome to Bedford City Council meeting of March fourth. Yeah, if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Smith?
Here.
Asbury?
Here.
Longino?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Salvy?
Here.
Blue Hardy?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Uh, council, you have the minutes of the work session of February twentieth, twenty twenty four. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Asbury, second by Smith. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Upstate.
Blue Hardy?
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of February twentieth, twenty four, twenty twenty four. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance to Spinks, second by Blue Hardy. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Upstate.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Uh, ordinance number six dash twenty four. Unfinished business.
An ordinance, uh, authorizing the city manager to and the chief of police to enter into an. Oh, that's the wrong one.
I don't know. Go ahead, back, well.
Yeah, there we have.
All right.
An ordinance amending section nine eleven dash thirteen entitled backflow protection of the codified ordinances of the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
We've had two readings on this already, and this will be our third reading. And I have a motion for suspension. A Asbury, second by Longino. Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Blue Hardy. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is simply to update the current ordinance that has been in place. We had a backflow ordinance that was established and adopted in nineteen ninety four. A lot, a lot of large commercial buildings have backflow devices. Um, updating our ordinance will establish requirements for installation, maintenance, and testing of these devices just to ensure that our water system is safe and uncontaminated. Adjusting the ordinance will allow it to comply with today's standards. And that's especially important when we do a lot of our reporting to the Ohio EPA and go after public funds to improve our water system, which we own and operate.
Thank you. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Um, before we get into the reports, uh, I just wanna pass along a special birthday wishes to our former councilwoman Marilyn Zalata. Had a nice birthday party over this weekend. She turned ninety years old. I can say it now because it was what the public, uh, it was really nice for her and, uh, it was good to see they had that party for her. So I just want to extend officially our wishes for her, her birthday. And also, we have set up the dates for our ward meetings, which will be coming up in April and May. Uh, the dates and times will be forthcoming, so stay tuned for that. And we'll start with, uh, Mr. Malice.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Uh, first, the Shelley Company and ODOT, they will be, uh, mobilizing end of March, tentatively on March twenty fifth. Uh, they're gonna be going through the punch list on the remaining items for the Broadway project, as well as they'll be adjusting a number of the Cleveland Water castings, uh, which are some of the low points, uh, along Broadway, those will be raised up. So that will be happening, um, end of the month and into April. I also want to congratulate staff. Uh, we received an announcement that we were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant through the county, uh, which will, uh, allow for the purchase of two additional police cruisers for the police department. Those will be replacing two vehicles that have, uh, currently over a hundred thousand miles. So that'll be, that'll be good. We are making, uh, an impact in, uh, updating our fleet. And anytime you use someone else's money is, is great. I also wanted to touch on, we were out at a couple of different locations and had our engineers do inspections, um, on culverts. We have one over, uh, in Palmetto Woods. Uh, we're still waiting on the detailed report on that, although structurally it looks like it's in, um, good shape, although the roadway will need repairs. However, the culvert on Greencroft needs to be replaced. Uh, we did inquire with OPWC, uh, for emergency funding on that, um, because structurally it, the, the bottom part is eroding. Um, they did not, uh, grant the emergency funding. They said it's not an emergency. Apparently you have to wait till something catastrophic or that it really fails. Um, but there's a couple of different other avenues that we're researching as far as funding. Um, we're working on the design work for that now, and, um, our goal is to work on that repair and bring that to city council, um, this year. Uh, estimate is approximately four hundred thousand dollars, but most likely with contingencies built in. To replace that in the roadway, it's gonna probably be close to a half a million dollars. Lastly, just want to touch on weather being nice. We have had a couple, um, uh, up in, uh, one of the wards, the crime of opportunity, the vehicle break-ins. Lock, lock your doors, friendly reminder, lock your car doors. Um, a couple of vehicles were, were rummaged through, change. Um, things like that will go missing. That is a crime of opportunity. Um, just a friendly reminder, lock, lock those car doors. End of report.
Thank you.
Mr. Montol. I just wanted to say thank you all for coming. I have no report tonight. I think it's the start of daylight savings time, though, this weekend, so make sure you turn your clocks forward, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a report tonight. Thank you.
Then we'll start with, uh, Mr. Smith.
Believe me, um, I'd just like to, uh, say that, uh, I think it's March sixth. Um, we will be having a family night out, a family night engagement at the high school. Not sure the time, do they, they will be put out real soon? Six to eight? Okay. So it'll be six to eight at the high school. Please come out, engage with the community, uh, children. And on, uh, March twentieth, um, we will be having a, a job fair for the youth. Uh, in past years, or I know one year, I think it was last year, year before, um, we had jobs in the city of Bedford, and we didn't have the youth, uh, they didn't apply. So what we're trying to do this year is, uh, put it out there to them, uh, before the summer, that they'll apply. Um, there's gonna be some interview, interviewing skills where we're gonna talk about interviewing, um, how to dress, what to say. This will be in conjunction with the other three municipalities. This is not just Bedford. We're trying to engage with all the, all the communities in the area so that we have some working, some working relationships here. So on that date, please, uh, if you have a child at the high school, please encourage them to come. It will be during the lunch period. It's gonna be an auxiliary jam. So once again, you will be hearing more about that in report.
Thank you. Mr. Asbury?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no formal report, but, uh, there were two ladies with special, two special ladies with birthdays over the weekend. Happy birthday Marilyn Zalata, and my mom would have been ninety-one yesterday, so, um, she was born three, three, thirty-three. And her party.
So it's my mom's birthday, too. Twenty-eight, not three. Uh, Mr. Longino?
Uh, nothing except, uh, when, uh, Mr. Smith was, uh, no, I think, I'm sorry, when John was talking about, uh, the clocks are going ahead. I know the American appreciate this. Also change your smoke detectors, right? So, but I have nothing. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
Yeah, I had the, um, honor of going to Marilyn Zalata, who was my mentor. Um, her and Paula Mees at golf, and it's hard to believe that, uh, on, uh, February the eighteenth, uh, it's two years since Paula passed away. Those were two. So it was very good to see and celebrate with Marilyn, ninety years young. Her birthday was on, uh, February the twenty-seventh, so mine's on the February twenty-first. So we used to always have February month, birthday month with me and Marilyn. So it was good. It was greatly, uh, uh, attended, and it was good to, uh, see her. Um, she hates being slowing down some, but, uh, doing pretty good at ninety years old. Um, Mike, um, Steel Chipper Service is gonna start in April. As I've noticed for the last, when we had that bad storm a couple of weeks ago, there's a lot of big limbs piled up on the tree lawn. And, uh, so they'll need to, when we, will go out the first Tuesday in, uh, April?
First, first full week of April.
Okay, first full week. Okay, yeah, because also remind, uh, if you do have a bunch of branches out, make sure that you call the service department, uh, to pick them up. So also Mike Steel, a lot of trash cans being left out for a week at a time. Um, the weather being better, I'm hoping not to see that this week. And with the wind being so bad last week, there was trash everywhere. Um, it'd be a culture. This past, uh, uh, Saturday, we had the one hundred twentieth birthday celebration of Dr. Seuss at the, um, museum, at the, uh, uh, community room. Well attended. It was amazing. Lot of kids and adults, a lot of adults came this year, so, uh, that was, uh, very successful, lot of fun. Um, the kids weren't really interested. There were so much crafts. They really liked doing all the crafts and stuff, and a couple of adults, too. So, uh, it was, uh, fun had by all. We sang happy birthday. There was a couple of March birthdays there, so, uh, the adults and children had a lot of fun at the Dr. Seuss, um, thing. But this Friday coming up, the Bedford Historical Society Speaker Series, the Battle of Picketts Mills. The community room, that's at seven o'clock to nine o'clock, Old Church, in the Old Church. And, um, that is free. We do take donations. Um, big, big event, one of our big fundraisers coming up next weekend. Next Saturday, March sixteenth, I still have ton, I've got tons because we've been selling pretty good. Um, that's gonna be at Elmwood, that's our reverse rifle Bedford Historical Society. I do have tickets on sale. Please see me because they are going out fast. And again, that's one of our big, uh, fundraisers for the year. Our next one coming up, well, we're already planning on it, is, uh, the Strawberry Festival. And there, uh, we had to make some changes due to the fact that Kent Company, the party safari that we have worked with for years and years and years, and they have been very generous with us. Um, it's very sad to say they're gonna be closing their doors in April. Um, so we had to make some changes this year. New will be, um, starting off in June second. This is our sixtieth year, the car show, that's a Sunday. Um, we'll have a couple of bands playing. We will be selling hot dogs and chips and stuff. And the car show will be in downtown Bedford. Since it started in nineteen sixty-four, we'll have a couple of, uh, nineteen sixty-four models. Um, I had the pleasure of going to the high schools, the automotive thing. And so the seniors, those young men are just, it's so amazing, and so many of those are honors students. And one young man that I had the pleasure of being in my basketball camp and stuff, he's got so much credit. His records are good. He really doesn't even have to go to school, but he goes to shop to help out. But, uh, those kids have their own cards, so their, their own cards. They're gonna be having their own for the seniors at the high school. So they'll be competing. We'll have a little thing with that. And, uh, like I said, band sets the kickoff. Car show is on June second, one to five, so that's gonna be kind of nice because usually we don't get to enjoy that part of it because we got so much going on. And then seventh, eighth, and ninth, um, the Strawberry Festival. And new this year will be, you will be able to preorder fresh strawberry pies. So that's new, and there also will be fresh strawberries being sold. So the rumors that there's not gonna be strawberries at the Strawberry Festival is not true. There's gonna be more strawberry at all the vendors. We're gonna have a lot of new vendors in. So there'll be more to come on that. And, uh, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Salvy?
Uh, good evening. Um, due to illness, my meeting with the Bedford superintendent of schools last week was postponed. I'm hoping to reschedule the meeting this week. Um, at a, uh, Wentso Road residence request, I investigated and reported dirt spill in Wentso Road. There was a visible six-foot wide dirt spill on the easterly side of Wentso from the point of the, uh, dead end of Wentso into the, where the, uh, multiple businesses drive is located. Uh, the full lane spill continued all the way to Solon Road and continued onto Solon Road going west. I took a few photos of the document to document the spill. Asked the city manager, uh, to send someone from the city to document the spill, perhaps identify the careless company. And, uh, uh, city manager Malice told me that he has done so, and I appreciate that very much, and so do the residents. I visited a number of residents in Ward Two this past weekend to find out if they were aware of the planning commission had recently approved an application to open up a group home at eight twenty-one Archer Road. None of the residents who answered their doors were aware that the home within their site was even up for consideration, let alone approved to become an eight-room group home. Uh, I believe the planning commission, uh, meeting would have been full of residents if they had sufficient notice. I think the city needs to send out meeting notices to the nearby neighbors who will be most affected by, uh, homes transformed into group homes. In addition, uh, several sewer culverts, and Mike, please correct me if I'm using the wrong term, are being repaired or replaced on Taft Helper in Northfield Road, so be aware as you drive through the ward. Uh, lastly, I encourage Ward Two residents to call me. If you, uh, see something wrong happening, say something. I want our community to be the safest in Cogga County, but that will not happen without, uh, your participation. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blue Hardy?
Help everything over there, what Sandy was saying about the strawberries and stuff, so I don't have anything else, uh, other than, uh, just quiet up on the hill. End of report.
Thank you. And I would like to, uh, welcome Mrs. Angelique Carter from our school board here again this evening. Uh, thanks for joining us. Uh, anybody has questions after the meeting, she's here, and if you would like to say something, uh, please come forward.
Uh, good evening. Just, um, to piggyback off of what Mr. Frank said was the events that we're having at the high school, um, it's actually six thirty to eight on Wednesday. Um, it's our event, family event, um, calling out for people to learn different, um, things about politics, about the cities. about politics, about the cities, um, all four municipalities and things like that, and then of course we're doing the, um, event on the twentieth, so if you are interested in being a, if you have a business within the city, and you want to come and be someone who, um, provides the interviewing process, um, I believe, are you still taking people for that, or?
Well, um, Candace Williams has, I think she has three people that's gonna, um, do the interview process, but, um, the high school, they were, the counselors or something was-
Setting that up.
Yeah, they're, where they're gonna start to actually talk about it with the students, so they could be ahead of the game, but when they get there.
Yes, okay, 'cause I know it's on the flyer that if anybody wanted to participate and be a person who actually does the interviewing, if you own a business, then definitely sign up for that, I mean, we always love having that participation from our communities, um, but other than that, definitely, we have a meeting this Thursday, um, so if you're interested in coming and hearing more about what we have going on within the school district and the great things we have going on, definitely come.
Um, I would just like to say also, just to, um, add a little bit more, um, if there's any businesses that hire special needs students, um, can you please contact us, um, I think my name is on the, on the flyer, um, for contact, but, um, we're trying to make it this all-inclusive, so we, we need, we wanna have some businesses for the special needs students to be able to work also this, so, like I said, if there's any businesses and hire special needs students, please contact us.
Thank you.
This, this Wednesday?
Um, so, yes, this Wednesday is actually the family event.
Oh, the family.
That's the family event, and then March twentieth is when they're doing the, um, interviewing, um, and things like that for, during the lunch periods, that's on March twentieth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to new business.
Sir, can I get a motion to rename and dedicate Palmetto Totlot as Paula Mezak Park, please?
Motion by, Spinks, second by Blue Hardy, all in favor, or not all in favor? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
And of course there'll be more coming on that, when and gonna happen, and it'll be when there's better winter out, so try to do it outdoors, they have the totlot. The motion-
Yes, sir, can we get a motion to accept the planning commission's decision to allow James Rem to open a group home at eight-two-one Archer Road in, in R-one District, please?
Motion for such by Longino, second by Smith, uh, before we call the vote, um, is there anyone here from, uh, Archer Road? If you'd like to come forward? If somebody has any questions about it.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jatae Wiley, and I was here a couple of weeks ago, um, presenting for the group home that we have proposed, so our plans for the group home is to service people who have autism, so adults that are high-functioning autistic, um, adults. The house, um, is five bedrooms, four of those bedrooms would be used for clients, we would be, um, getting our clients from Department of Dis-, Department of Developmental Disabilities, um, if approved, um, we will have an interview process where we go through with the essay, who is the person who is going to be over, um, each individual, and to make sure they're a perfect fit for the home, um, not sure if anybody else has any questions specifically?
How many, uh, residents are you having?
Um, there are four bedrooms, and I think with the Department of Developmental Disabilities, we're allowed to have up to eight in the home, two, two people per bedroom, and one bedroom would be used for, um, twenty-four hours staff, to be there.
Do you know, uh, is it gonna be mixed, or all men, or all women, or?
Um, we don't, like, with the Department of, the, with the Department of Developmentally Disabled, they have a list of people, I don't know, like, what our list would look like, um, I would like it to be fairly mixed, um, just depending on, again, the nature of the individual, but we won't know all of that until we actually, um, have access to the people who require homes, um, as of today, there were twenty-one people on the site that required homes, most of them were male, some of them were female, so just depending on whether or not it would be a good mix.
I have a question. Uh, so, oh, I'm sorry.
You know, and even if we approve this tonight, you still have to go through the building department, the fire department, the county, and the state, and all that to get licensed or how, so, so.
Yes.
I'm sure you're well aware of it, I just wanted to mention it, and, um, so you do, everything's done properly, I know, we have several group homes in town, um, so far they've been about a problem, so.
I appreciate that, yes, we have started, um, looking into all of the licensing for that, and, um-
Sir, 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 please, she's talking, thank you.
Yes, we've started looking into all the licenses that would be required for that, appreciate it.
And a question, um, how many people live in the home currently, and are there renters in that, at that address?
Currently, there are two people who, two, um, adults that live in the home, and my brother has custody of his two daughters, however, um, if this was turned into a group home, my brother and his daughters wouldn't live there.
You had a question?
I, I believe you answered it with the license or something.
Okay.
Yes, we, we're, um, we, we will be licensed through, um, Medicaid or Medicaid in the state of Ohio.
That'd be a lot of people watching.
Right, well, thank you. Real quick, I'm sorry, I, I kinda looked it up, um, there's three different classes of group homes, class one, two, three, I couldn't find a lot of information on the differences, do you know what classification you would be?
I don't know, I don't know, um, which classes you're referring to, so I guess-
The state of Ohio, just, it, it, if, if you look up group homes and requirements, it'll give you three different classifications, or a class one, class two, and class three, I don't know if it's just occupancy, or if one is adults versus children, I, I couldn't find that.
Oh, I, I'm honestly not sure, we have to get the license from DODD first before we can be classified at all, so it would be, it would depend on what license we receive, but the license that we are trying to get is for, specifically for people with developmental disabilities, so it would be adults, so whatever that would be, I'm not taking children or anybody under-
Not real clear, but-
Yeah, I wasn't taking anybody under eighteen.
Thank you.
So I know some of the group homes are restricted to six, and if you go above six, then, like, sprinkle the house and do all kinda major stuff, so, again, like, to investigate it all that.
Yes, and we were told, and we were told at the last meeting that, um, we, we would need a sprinkler if it was over five, so we have been calling and getting all of that information together this last-
Oh, you are looking into that?
Yes, and I, honestly, I would, honestly, I would love to have the house sprinkled anyway, 'cause like, even in my own personal home, um, just a, just a week or so ago, I just have two little dogs, but like, we put a light bulb in the light fixture, and it almost caught the whole house on fire, and I'm like, oh, and it was after the meeting, I'm like, well, that sprinkler system, I wanna sprinkle every household I'm in, just, just in case, 'cause you never know.
Well, as a former firefighter, I congratulate you on that, I wish every house was sprinkled.
Yeah, like, it, it was really scary, I'm like, fuck my two little dogs right there, but luckily, it burned the light fixture, but the house didn't catch fire.
I did see fire trucks down there, that's what that was.
It wasn't me, so it might've been someone else, I didn't, I didn't require, um, support.
Somebody, somebody down by that end-
Yeah.
-the other day, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Court, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
No.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Orders number ten dash twenty-four.
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Ohio Plan Risk Management Corporation for property and liability insurance coverage for the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
The motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Blue Hardy, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Smith, second by Asbury, uh, who wants a mic for Jen?
I, I can, I can do it. Uh, the city, over the last twenty-five, thirty years, we have been a member of the Ohio Municipal Joint Insurance Pool, it's a pool of municipalities, villages, um, that go together to get the best rate on liability insurance, property insurance, um, vehicle insurance, all of that in, in one bundle. Unfortunately, the pool that we've been involved in, and we've saved tens of thousands of dollars over, over the years, um, just going back, before, before we joined the pool, our annual cost for this type of coverage was about a half a million dollars a year, um, when we've been in the pool, the last two years, our annual payment for this coverage has been two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, so we've done well, being a member of, of a large pool, to get a lower rate, um, for the coverage. Unfortunately, the pool that we were involved in, they've had, uh, a reduction in municipalities, um, there's been some high claims, and it just wasn't cost-effective to move forward, so the decision was made to disperse the pool, disband the pool, and now we are looking at other options, and, which is what's on the legislation today for council to vote on, which is a recommendation from the administration, is to join the Ohio Plan, uh, this would be effective April first, uh, the Ohio Plan is a similar pool throughout the state of Ohio, uh, in comparison, the Ohio Municipal Joint Insurance Pool that we've been a member of, um, currently have thirty-two member communities, the Ohio Plan, which is what we're proposing to join, has eight hundred across the state. Uh, just a couple highlights real quickly, um, our property blanket on our current coverage was approximately sixty-one million dollars, the Ohio Plan is increasing that coverage to eighty-seven million dollars, um, for vehicles, we typically work off of an actual cash value on replacement, um, and we're, the Ohio Plan is actually switching to a replacement cost, that's a big, a big deal, um, when you look at values, you know, we have a lot of vehicles, um, that are well-maintained, uh, but we might have a pickup truck that's a ninety-two, works great, if it's damaged, to replace that, we're getting a small amount of, or, uh, the coverage is better, um, so these are a couple different, um, highlights of the Ohio Plan, um, the biggest highlight is, the cost is about nineteen thousand dollars cheaper than what we are currently paying, uh, it'll be, uh, approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars annually to have this coverage, uh, which is about, uh, like I said, nineteen thousand dollars, uh, less than what we're currently paying. City is still gonna maintain our cyber insurance, uh, through travelers, through a separate policy, uh, which is, Jen and I, uh, finance director and I both, uh, believe that is the appropriate thing to do at this time, our recommendation is to, uh, pass this, if council would consider that this evening, to ensure coverage would begin April first.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Orders number eleven dash twenty-four.
Yes, sir, an ordinance to levy assessments for delinquent water bills in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Smith, second by Asbury, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Orders number eleven dash twenty-four.
Yes, sir, an ordinance to levy assessments for delinquent water bills in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Smith, second by Asbury, call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Let me now come to the hearing of citizens, if you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
My name is Marlin, last year I was here for the last meeting, I'm at five-oh-seven Button Road, basically here, uh, because there was almost another serious accident in front of my home, uh, right after, the weekend after the past council meeting, I think it's important that I give you, because since a couple of your members already are familiar with my story, I, I think it's important to give you a moment to give you the backstory of my complaint, so the situation is this, five-oh-seven Button Road sits between Broadmoor and Saturn Circle, you got five houses separated by these two side streets, okay, you have, uh, the house on the corner of Broadmoor and West Grace, whose driveway is on Broadmoor, so they're not affected, you have the house that I'm complaining about, four-nine-five, which is the second house, you have the third house that has an elderly woman who does it drive, so she's not affected, you got the fourth house, which is my house, which, if we were talking in a strong meeting, would be in the habitable zone, perfect position for a total eclipse, then you have the house next door to me, by distance, they're not obstructed, okay, obstructed by what? Well, the whole point of my, the whole point of me being here is I'm trying to propose some type of reasonable, common sense legislation that limits either the size of a vehicle or the time of a vehicle that can park on the part of the driveway where the tree lawn is, for, for about a year and a half, these people, by a year and a half before these people moved in, and they left a red car out there, it's not like there wasn't room to drive, it was the only thing out there, and it literally sat there for about a year, what did it move, like, three times out of a year, year and a half, it just sat there, and what happens is, anyone on this panel, when you're backing out of your driveway, you know, you're backing out, and then you, you're looking both ways, well, most people, when they're backing out of their driveways, when you get to the sidewalk, you still got a, a view, this is where the eclipse come in, when you're backing out of my driveway, uh, the, you know, you're backing out, and once you cross the sidewalk, that's where the eclipse come in, you can't see anything until you get just beyond the vehicle, and then by that time, depending on if it's inclement weather or whatever, cars are slamming on your brakes, they're blowing your horns, now for a year and a half, there was a red car that did this, I made several complaints about this, at the time they were doing redistricting, called you once, Jeff Ashbury, you were like, oh, I, sorry, it's not my area, you referred me to Frank Smith, called to Frank Smith, hey, you know, I've been complaining about this, blah, 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 hey, you know, did you call the police, I called the police, made several requests, and in fact, they know my voice by now, so then, he goes, okay, so he comes over, Mr. Smith comes over, and, uh, you know, you know, listens to my story, then he goes, well, let me talk to the, uh, the city ma-, uh, city manager, and, you know, got back to me, you know, there's nothing we can do, they're not parked on the side, they're not crossing the sidewalk, they're not parked on the grass, I'm like, yeah, but, dude, there's, like, several, um, you know, it's been ac- almost accidents in front of my house, fine, we dealt with it, and you know, what was sad was, um, we just spent over two-hundred K of our retirement buying this home, and I just finished putting twenty grand in renovations in this house, and we can't even get in and out of our driveway, fine, I'm dealing with it, my wife's checking my blood pressure, 'cause I gotta report to the VA my blood pressure every week, it's kinda messed up, but, oh, well, and so one day, um, the car was gone, the red car was gone, didn't my pressure go down? So, a week goes by, no red car, I can't get it out of my car, two weeks go by, I'm washing my car now, you know, three weeks go by, no red car, well, I'm starting to sweat, but, I don't know, but anyway, so, and I'll be brief, I'm almost done, so then one day I come out, and there's this really- Two weeks go by, I'm washing my car now, you know? Three weeks go by, no red car. Well, I'm starting to sweat, but, but anyway. So, and I'll be brief, I'm almost done. So then one day I come out and there's this really tall, really big commercial van sitting there. Okay, so now, see before when the car was there, if you were in a car and you were backing up, you were screwed. But you could still, like if this is my driveway, you can still, like, you know, without going into the street, clear that car so you could see uncoming traffic. Cause you need to keep in mind, my house is on Button Road and West Grace, they all run into together. Cars are coming at three, five, forty miles an hour. And you got Saturn Circle, like I mentioned before. My house is the second, uh, house from Saturn Circle. Saturn Circle feeds all the little neighborhoods in there. Shawnee and all those little neighborhood cul-de-sacs, all of those neighborhoods are fed by Saturn Circle. So when you're coming out of my yard, you can't see the traffic coming down West Grace. So you're looking at the traffic coming up Button and you don't see any, you might see a car come, okay, fine. So now you gotta inch out, now that the van is there, you gotta inch out into the street, you know? So you finally see your car coming this way, so now you're inching out to look this way. Now you saw that car coming, right? So you know, you're thinking there's no more cars coming. So then when you look this way again, while you're looking this way, another car's coming from Saturn Circle, okay? So then now, I'm like, there was almost a bad accident. Oh, I came to the meeting. You gave me my, my information, I gave him, my number, my wife's number. Tuesday was at me, that Saturday night was almost an accident in front of my house. I didn't sleep, I was so shook up. I called the police, um, Sunday morning, I think it was. I'm embarrassed at her, she's like, don't go out there. But anyway, uh, I called the police and the lady was very empathetic. Would you like to talk to an office? I said, please, I'd love to. Go outside, Bedford police comes up, he stops in front of the house, he looks, he comes up, are you Marlin? Yeah, I'm Marlin. He goes, tell me what's going on. So I told him, blah, blah, everything I just told you. I'm trying to contest it, I know you're ready to go on. So then, um, he says, you know what, Mr. Lester? I'm gonna get out and see things from your perspective, okay? And as soon as he, um, got into my driveway, he looks and he goes, wow, that's a tough one. You know, I can't do anything because they're not parked on the grass or parked across the sidewalk. But let me just, uh, one last thing I would like to do real quick is I would like to tell you, uh, what happened with my, uh, I'm sorry, I'm just, uh, my first correspondence to Mr. Smith was, good morning, sir. Uh, you know, after the white truck got there, cause the van, I mean, I mean, uh, the car, no one did anything about that. I'm not reading it yet. So I go, when I saw the van, after the one close call, I go, good morning, sir. I would like to talk again about, uh, four ninety-five West Grace. Uh, he now has a large van parked beyond his sidewalk, making it a worse obstruction, uh, than the car was. I find it hard to believe that Bedford threatened to give me a ticket when, um, I parked part of my truck tire on my grass when I bought this house, but would tolerate a renter, um, degrading the quality of life in such a nice, clean neighborhood. I said, I grew up in Warrensville and watched things like this lead to the low property values today. I'm not the only neighbor who feels like this. And he responded, just so I have a cleaner, so I can blow my nose. Damn, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I have a cold too, but, but I'm never prepared when I come prepared. But that's okay, at least I'm not shy. Um, so basically, uh, he hit me back, he goes, greetings, I hope that this correspondence finds you in the best of health and spirits. Call the police, make a report. This is the route for you to have, or for you to take, rather. I go, look, I made numerous calls and was referred to you. This is your ward and it reflects on you. It is increasingly dangerous pulling out of our driveway and Bedford is in acting. I said, I will fill out a police report in writing for my insurance company in case of an accident so that they will know I've made several attempts with several offices to address this problem. And basically that's where we are right now. I'm basically here for the record, my nose running and all that. But anyway, something needs to be done about this before someone is hurt, period. I mean, the time to act was yesterday. You know, this is it, we can't take it anymore.
Yeah, and we can, uh, certainly look into that if there's any way we can change things. And, uh, we gotta work back from our law director and city manager, see what we can legally do.
Okay. I, I would, I'd really appreciate that. You-
We'd wanna look into it.
You and Officer Matt, you, you're pretty cool. Yeah, I wish I had Officer Matt here because he really took the time to really see what I was going through, you know?
That's, that's good to hear.
Thank you.
Ask a question?
Sure.
Have you considered, or the city considered, I know in Florida where there's a lot of high hedges, okay, they use mirrors. Is this, is that a possible solution to your predicament?
I'm an idiot, I don't know what you just said.
Okay. Uh, a lot of residences where there's a lot of high hedges in Florida, which are more common than Ohio. They can't see out of their driveway either. So they have large, uh, there's specially made mirrors to help with traffic. So you can see as you're pulling, as they're pulling out, as you could perhaps see how traffic is flowing. I'm just, I'm just throwing that.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea, you know, but I mean, I think all of you are welcome to pull in my driveway anytime you want, especially when we're having dispock and you would really get an idea. I'm telling you, unless you're Officer Matt or Steve or Stanley, Co- how do you pronounce your?
Cochi.
Cochi, sorry. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like a thing you gotta experience. And I do know what you're saying, but, you know, this, 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 this is, in the words of Officer Matt, a wise man would say, that's a tough one, so.
I have residents in my ward have the same, similar problem on Columbus Road. That's, you know, primarily speeding rather than obstruction, but they don't have a lot of time to react to vehicles.
Then that's the problem I'm having because, uh, like I mentioned, Officer, uh, Matt, I'm like, you know, with this traffic going as fast as it is, you know?
We will look into it.
And I, I'm so sorry I didn't pronounce your name correctly, too.
Not a problem, it gets butchered all the time.
Good night.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone.
Call your phone.
Is it my phone?
Could be, uh. I can't, we can't hear you though.
Ninety-seventh East Interstate.
I feel the German state, well, I guess.
Right. I have a question about Exile. What's going on? I heard that this was closing, is that-
Nope, 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 they're not closing. But they did, they did announce, uh, a couple of weeks ago, they were laying off, uh, some people. But it's a business decision and how they're operating their business. Mike, you, you can explain it better, you.
Yeah, they, they announced that, uh, up to eighty individuals would be laid off. They actually made the announcement, uh, at the end of December, early January, they're required to, when a certain percentage of, uh, the employment and evocation is provided that notice, it's a, it's called a warrant notice. Um, but it is, like the mayor said, there, the existing line that they inherited from the previous company, when I say line, like manufacturing line, um, that line is gonna be going off. They're not gonna be utilizing it anymore. Uh, for whatever reasons, not to get into the specifics there. But they are, um, they're producing, uh, they are producing, uh, the new bag system, which is they developed a whole separate line and I, we're optimistic that they'll continue to expand at that site. As far as closing, no. Um, I'll also add too, that we recently met with HICMA, which is also at that site. Separate business when HICMA acquired the prop- uh, the R and D research and development, that is the large glass building in the rear. Uh, they started with under ten employees, I think there was actually five. Um, we joked that like each of them had their own floor, there was nobody there. Um, they're now approaching seventy, um, very skilled, uh, research and development positions. They submit anywhere from twelve to twenty-five patents yearly to the FDA. Um, that's a lot. Uh, and there's a lot of work that goes into that, so they're doing well. Uh, we, that meeting was a couple of weeks ago, I, I briefed council on, and we're trying to connect them with state, um, state individuals and county individuals to help them as far as their expansion needs. And, um, I think they just invested about a million and a half in the building last year and there's gonna be more this year, so.
That's a nice building. So what, what does that mean to you?
Uh, it's, Zalaya is pharmaceutical, they manufacture pharm- HICMA is pharmaceutical as well, but it is solely research and development. They don't manufacture at this site.
And then, um, what, I call it, L S, what is it? Lake Shore? It's short. They, you said they were supposed to expand or not?
Yeah. They're building a whole new, uh, factory over on, uh, Tinker's Creek property across from Shawnee Golf Course. Um, they're expanding, they're growing like crazy, so they, they can't get the building up fast enough, so. They're doing well and adding more, more workers. So it's a good thing.
And then I see that that barbershop, the approach, right, on the corner of Paul and North Field?
Paul. Your barber shop, yeah.
And then I see they tried to do a bit of patching on North Field down there. Um, near, what is it, Gorn?
Solon. Their Solon, we did that intersection right over the bridge.
Yeah, then Gorn, Gorn, what is it, West? No, no.
Dorf.
No, no, Gorn, no. They were doing just a tad of the patching.
Yeah, we've done some patching. The problem is that's a state route, so it's not our street.
So would it be okay?
Tell everybody, call the, call- Yeah.
Okay, well, that's all my thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say good evening, governor, and the governing body of this gathering this evening. And I'd like to say these words, to make my reflections to be accepted.
Can, can we get your name and address, sir?
Oh, excuse me. Name, Fred Russell, hyphen, Bay, thought to fly to India. R U S S C E L L, hyphen, B Y. I've had some circumstances occur in my home that must, I must bring, must bring for you, governing body. The circumstances are so numerous, I, I can't begin to speak about what's wrong. But yet, when I see the, uh, the inspection being wavered by who? Who's wavered the inspection? I didn't waver it. The person that sold me the house, sold me the house under false pretenses. The false pret- pretenses were so, uh, jokers, uh, obtuse, I would say. I can't go forth any further, but I'd like to have these understand that we reflected in the records. The records are to be, to, not to my advantage or to yours, but to the truth that's involved with the circumstances, involved with the estate agent that sold me the house. I have his information, his name, so forth and so on, but I don't think he treats me like a human being. I think we all are human. I don't care what your color is, but your way of belief is. I know you're a human being. Big thank you. By you being human, we are all people under the eyes of God. God didn't come here to make any of us better than the other. I just want respect of others be given and accepted for me. I haven't been respected. I haven't been, uh, observed in a proper manner to be in this municipality I live on one s- one seven Green Cross Road. That's why I live, that's why I reside. What I had to do to get into, into the property was so obtuse. I can't go forth with too much at this time, but I think it's, it's time that I get some type of understanding, respect. I, I just ask that. I would think I demand, I'm not demanding anything from this government, governing body. I'm just looking for some respect for what I feel is home to me. I would, I approached the, uh, city manager and I, I think he did the right answer, so. I'm gonna go forth with that and hopefully we have some resolutions to this problem. I thank you. God bless you. I see y'all.
You, you talked, you know, you're aware, okay, as long as he's aware of what's going on, then we can-
Well.
Get to that.
But he's thinking about, he's not thinking hard enough. Good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward?
My say.
Seeing none, I have a motion for a German by Lou Hardy, second by Spinks. Call the roll please.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.